Call the city council work session to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vining, Germani.
Here.
Present.
Felder, Whitman.
Excused.
Grave.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Present. So, Mr. Sell is our assistant city manager. He's here with us this evening to walk us through some of our agenda items. And Ed, if you would like to, I know we have a couple of items here on the work session.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The first item is his presentation on the railroad grade separation feasibility study that the city council approved back in June. I'm going to have Patrick Lewis come up to the podium and make introductions and lead off the presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services. And I will hand it off indeed to the Manikin Smith Quandell team. I'll introduce Chris Zangara, P.E., with the Manikin Smith Group, and he will step you through this evening's presentation. We've allocated time for questions at the end, but he's going to start the presentation and introduce the rest of his team, and we'll both be available for questions when we're all done. So, Mr. Zangara, floor is yours.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name's Chris Zangara, as Pat said. Work with Manikin Smith Group. With me today, I have Tim Huffner from Quandell Consultants, Jean Hartline from Manikin Smith. She's our traffic engineer and traffic expert who spent a lot of time on the project, and Eric Bennett, he's our municipal services leader for Michigan. Today, we were asked to present on a study that this body had approved about a month and a half ago, two months ago, some of the findings for a real great, potential real great separation project. There's a lot of slides. If you have a question, please interrupt, and then we'll try to answer it as we go, and then there's time for questions at the end. These first couple of slides, this is what we're calling our placemat. It kind of sets the tone, the stage for why we're doing what we're doing. We're basically in pursuit of grant funds for a need for a potential project here in Monroe. Knowing the history of the Monroe and the rail issues that Monroe has, we thought it would be a really good idea to pursue this. So, we presented this to several people in the city, the engineer and Vince, and they thought it'd be a great idea to pursue this potential grant funding. Part of it is readiness and preparedness, and that is kind of reflected in the way of a study. You can show the federal government that you've spent some time looking into a particular project or an issue. This kind of puts some teeth into what you're trying to do. Just scroll forward here. Again, this is a background. Essentially, what happened is this year is sort of unprecedented with a $5.5 billion state funding. We've heard upwards of 150 million, but it's fluctuating. But the $5.5 million, a billion dollars, excuse me, grant program through the federal government is real. It's a five-year program, and that's the one we're sort of focusing on and eyeballing. The state funding may or may not come, but I think Tim may have some information on that as we go along here. Again, we presented this drawing the last time as well. We were looking at Monroe holistically as two large projects. One is on the east side. It's a more regional type project. It's in this green oval you can see up on the screen. The second project, which is the one we focused our study on, is the gray oval area. It's a new grade separation on the west side to create that connectivity across the CSX Railroad on the west side of Monroe. The east side is a much larger, broader regional project. We decided to kind of focus on the west side instead of the east side at this time, although both are very viable candidates for the funding that's available. So, study objectives was basically really two, is to determine the most suitable crossing and then develop enough information to submit for a grant application if we choose to do so. And right now, again, we're just focused on that west side crossing, not necessarily the east side, which, if you think about it, the west side really plays into the whole grandiose Monroe, Monroe rail consolidation program, and it's just one small piece, the west side project, as part of the grander Monroe scheme, if you will. So, the three primary locations that we were looking at were West Seventh Street, West Front Street, West Elm Street. There's a photo of them. I'm pretty sure everybody's probably fairly familiar with those locations. Main evaluation criteria that we looked at was traffic, environmental, or NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act, railroad considerations, geometrics at each location, property impacts, and of course, cost. So, what the results of the study really pointed out was essentially West Elm being or having the most potential for a new grade crossing. Front Street, West Front Street, has the second most potential, and then West Seventh Street, we got into it a little bit and decided that it really, we wouldn't recommend a grade separation at that location for various reasons, but some of the primary reasons we weren't was the route traffics, or excuse me, the route would traffic, new traffic into the residential areas, local areas significantly more than what's there now today. It had the greatest vertical profile adjustments required. I can show you that in just a minute. And then, some of the lowest traffic improvements would be seen from a grade separation at Seventh Street. So, we sort of discounted Seventh Street and kind of focused on Elm Street and Front Street. So, getting into West Elm, if there were a project, if you can see up here on the screen, it would, the project would extend from approximately just east of Huber Drive to just west of Rossler Street, excuse me, right to that point right there in front of Danny's. And of course, it would extend up Toll Street a little bit. Mason Run Drain runs along the tracks. It would have to be rerouted. Tried to kind of picture that in the green area with the new drain running through the Bay Corrugated property and then along the west side of YMCA. So, there is property acquisition involved. The X's would indicate properties that we think would need to be procured as part of the project. There's simply no way to develop or provide access in an easy way to those two properties. So, that's pretty much the extent of a project that would look, that we would be looking at at Elm Street. This is a cross section, a typical section of what you might see if you're passing under the railroad. We determined that a through girder type structure is probably going to be your best bet. This is a picture of a through girder, and actually, this was taken just last Friday. It's actually along the brand-new through girder that they put in along Norfolk Southern, adjacent to Winchester Street Bridge. So, that's what it would look like as a train's passing through. It would provide three lanes of traffic, two six-foot shoulders, two curb and gutters, and then the mixed-use path would be located on the south side of the road and a 10-foot sidewalk on the north side. And this is a, just a picture of what exists at Elm Street today. I mean, you can see geometrically the track height to the surrounding areas in the school area, in the YMCA, and in Bay Corrugate. It's approximately eight or nine feet difference already right now. So, it's really, it lends itself geometrically to grade separation and underpass at this location. Set up quite well. So, West Front Street, again, it's a close second to a West Elm, except it's got a couple of, a couple more complications. And by the way, I should note that on Elm Street, before I move on, is it had one major drawback. Tim will talk about that in a little bit, is we are building a bridge in a floodplain. So, that could be looked at as a significant negative, but I mean, we felt that the positives outweighed that, that item. Okay, so, West Front Street, the extent of the project would extend roughly east of Toledo Avenue to just past Kalani Drive. The big difference with this location is that in order to construct this, there's a lot more residential and commercial properties closer to the roadway here. We would have to build, and then the grade isn't as, the difference currently isn't as big, so we would have to construct a lot more retaining wall. So, it drove the cost up significantly. In addition to that, you can see the yellow X's. Those show impacts to property that would have to be procured or would be rendered basically not usable because of an access problem. Again, very similar cross-section would be anticipated. The only difference here from West Elm is that there's not a designated bike path going in. So, instead of one 14-foot wide pathway and one 10-foot, you have, you have two 10-foot sidewalks. Everything else is identical. And then this, again, is a picture of Front Street as it exists today. Might look at the one drawback is those retaining walls that have to get constructed on the south side of the road are going to be right in front of some of those condominiums, but we think that that certainly can be done. We just have to dress it up to make it look appropriate for the new, for the new grade crossing. Okay, and then, so what we did, pros and cons, strengths and weaknesses, we developed a table for the three locations. We did include Seventh Street in this to try to kind of provide some highlights or high points of, you know, what's better over the other and kind of compared them in this chart, and Tim's going to go through that.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to be here today. As Chris mentioned, we looked at the three different locations, and I'll start with Seventh Street first, because if you look at the traffic flow and everything in the, in the city right now, it's just, it's just not a major, major route, and you'd be introducing a lot of traffic into a neighborhood and all of this. And also with the, with the height and, and some of the other things, there's no plans for pedestrians or anything in this, in this area. But the, but the, the benefit of it is, the only properties that were impacted, there was no residential impacts. It was all, it was all commercial in this area, and you had more flexibility because of the openness of that, of that site to raise, change grades with the railroad and the, and the road to be able to get, to get through it. But just the whole simple, without that really being a main thoroughfare today, we, was one of the biggest reasons why we discounted it. I want to start out, when I talk with West Elm and West Front, that they were both good candidates, and it wasn't like there's a, you could easily do either one, but we recommended, we recommended Elm Street. And, you know, some of the reasons were the, the traffic flow and everything. There's more, there's more traffic on both of them. There are more direct routes to the out-county area into, into the downtown. They're higher traffic volumes, and the, one of the things that we had with Elm Street over Front Street, at Front Street, you've got the river right there and the railroad bridge within 100 feet or so of the grade crossing. So, you're not going to move that railroad track up or down any significant amount. So, that meant everything that you had to do was to take the road, to take the, the, the road down and under, and, you know, so you get a deeper cut, bigger retaining walls, and, you know, more impact on the adjacent properties and, and, and the condos particularly and all of that. The taking of the properties along the river, because there's just no good way, there's no good way to provide, provide access. So, that was, that was our, our thinking on that. And as far as like non-motorized pass and everything, they all, they all worked into, they all worked into that fine. And, but when we went over to Elm Street, because of the differential, thank you, because of the, the height differential there that, that Chris mentioned already being about nine, nine feet different, and plus, instead of being 100 or so feet from the railroad bridge over the river, we're about 14, 15 hundred, almost a quarter mile. So, there is the opportunity to make some grade adjustments at the, at Elm Street that we don't have the flexibility, which means the cut, having to dig down and get under it becomes less, and the robustness of the pump station and the volume of water and all that, that you've got to move. Now, the negative there was that Elm Street is in a floodplain, and it periodically floods and gets, gets closed today. And, but we felt that the limited amount of that was outweighed by the benefit that you would have for all, all the rest of the time, because you still would have the accurate crossings during a time when excessive, excessive rains. We also looked at, there were a couple of properties that, that needed to be, needed to be taken, and they're just simply, they're, they're too close to where the grade separation's going to be that you can't get decent driveway, driveway access. We, we actually looked at one time, could we provide access to the back of the properties? And there's a house being built now on the vacant lot that was there when we started talking. The vacant lot that was, that we, was there when we started talking about now has a house going in on it. So, that took away the option to, to be able to provide access, access through the back. The other piece, the difference between Front and Elm is the cost. The additional retaining walls and everything made Front Street much more, much more expensive, as well as being so close to the river bridge, you can't get separation between the tracks temporarily when you're building. So, you're going to be, building, building a railroad bridge next to a rail, active railroad track is very problematic. When you can't get decent separation, it becomes even more problematic. So, we feel that you can get separation during the construction at Elm Street that you can't get at, at Front Street. So, I think that's pretty much.
Thanks, Tim. So, real quick, just running through the costs, again, focusing on West Elm versus West Front Street, it's about $7 million difference between the two, with West Elm Street being lesser of the two. You can see the breakdown of costs there. So, and then we did throw in the numbers, a 30% contingency. I mean, these are $20, $22. We tried to escalate them based on what we're seeing in construction. It's, it's absolutely insane right now. So, we'd anticipate even more escalation. So, we tried to put in a fairly sizable contingency along with that. So, then, that's it for the presentation. As far as questions and next steps, we're doing all this again to try to set ourselves up well for a grant, for applying for a grant. Readiness, preparedness, and a study, put some teeth into a grant application. It's about a 30-page, sorry, Tim, go ahead.
Go ahead, Chris. Thank you. You know, the, one of the things that, that we showed in the beginning in the placemat is, is that there's an unprecedented level of federal funding available right now to take and build grade separations and, and things like this. So, it's, it never, and I, I worked at MDOT for 30 years in rail, and there's never been a federal program of this magnitude. Also, there's been significant conversation at the state level about, about a dedicated grade separation program. There were talk of, you know, the, in the administration's budget, I think there was 50 or 60 million. There was talk in the Senate of 150 million, you know, that could go to leverage these, these dollars. Ultimately, in the omnibus budget that was passed, there was 12 million for, earmarked for a project or, you know, dedicated to a project in, in Wayne County right now. That doesn't mean that they're not going to revisit it when they come back, and, you know, they didn't divvy up all of the funds that were available, and, you know, there, though, looks like there'll be a second bite of the apple. We're not sure what that's going to do. So, the, the federal grant process, we're, we've do a lot of these type applications, so we're, we're quite familiar with it. We know the federal, the folks at the federal government. The applications are due October 4th by 5 o'clock, you know, two weeks from tomorrow.
15 calendar days.
Yeah, yeah. So, it's, it's pretty expedited. They'll, this is an annual program, though. As we said, there's 5.5 billion over the next, over the next five years, so there'll be, there'll be another, another, another opportunity for it. Plus, there's some other federal grant, there's programs, there's a consolidated railroad infrastructure and safety grant program that's just been announced. And so, you know, there's opportunities that are going to, are going to be here, so.
And then, again, the grant, the, this initial, the first round, first year, the grants are due October 4th by 5:00 PM, roughly 15 calendar days from today, after today. Couple, couple of big things that would be needed to show as part of the grant would be letters of support from various stakeholders, you know, local politicians, of course, the city of Monroe, various others, the county, Eric maybe addressed that. I know we've talked with Dale Zorn's office several months ago, and he just, she said he's on board. He just needed a little more information, like a study, to show him which way to go. And then, the biggest thing that we would have to outline, and maybe Mr. Lewis might want to address that a little bit, is a local match. 20% local match is required for the, for funding of these projects. 20% or more. 20% is the minimum. So, I don't know, Pat, if you wanted to?
The higher the, the higher the local match level, the more successful the grant.
Mr. Sell, if you, any follow-ups there?
Twenty percent match is out there, and it's something we would need to deal with, obviously, but I, I think the purpose of tonight's meeting was to just get you a understanding of the projects that are available, and the plan was to come back. I think the city manager would like to move forward with a grant application, but the plan is to come, would, from him, would be to come back on October 3rd and get the city council's approval of a grant application. But he, but he would like some discussion tonight on what your thoughts are about it, and so that if we are going to move forward with a grant application, that we can be working on it between now and the next, next meeting. So, that's kind of where we're at with the project. Twenty percent is, you know, of Elm Street is about $6 million, and of, of Front Street's about $7 million. So, it's a good chunk of money. And I can tell you right now, I'm not going to tell you, you have that money in the bank, and you can go do this project. So, it's something we'd have to work on over the years, and hopefully, you know, get some state support, maybe get some railroad support. If, if all else failed, we would likely have to issue a bond to cover that match. So, and that bond doesn't have a dedicated funding source, so there would have to be some give and take on other projects that we could do in the city, because that would take up some of the funds. So, those are the types of decisions you're going to be faced with as we move forward. But for tonight, it was mainly just to sort of understand the project and be ready for decision time at the next meeting.
So, I guess I'll, I'll add on to that. So, we, as a council, had, have talked about grade separation in the past, in past years even, and recognizing there's multiple locations within our, in the city that would, would benefit from a grade separation. So, that, that goes back, we've even done studies years ago, in these, in these locations as well, at least thoughts about that. So, council did support moving forward, at least get this information, so we understand what it is. We understand what the cost is. We understand what the, what needs to be done. At the same time, things have kind of changed as, as was stated, the exceptional amount of funding that's coming from the federal government that would, would help pay for these type of, of $30 million cost of projects. And of course, we know what the benefits are, because we have one in our community that was done many years ago, the help of Congressman Dingle with the, the Dingle overpass there, and the benefit to that. So, we know, we know what, we know what's in front of us. We know what it is. I think we know the benefits. We know how we got here today. I just want to add that over the past couple of weeks or so, things have kind of accelerated, because it's at a SEMCOG meeting, and they talked about SEMCOG wanting to get involved and look at this from a regional perspective as well, trying to find regional partnerships of, in, of, of the SEMCOG region, of where those that are ready or have something in hand that might be. And then, they, they, as a, you talk about letters of support, it's really a big push support, because they see the need in southeast Michigan for rail separation from, from Monroe all the way to St. Clair and in between. We all know that, because we drive there as well. That said, they, they are wanting to at least put support behind, you know, two or three projects that go forward. So, they have called, and I know they've talked with Mr. Lewis and the city manager about that, and that's how we get here today on the timeline. It is relatively quick. It is relatively quick. And so this time is for us to have some thoughts, questions you may have. But also, we have a couple of weeks to think this through and get back with whether it be the manager or our consultants with additional information if we need that and we get that back. But as Mr. Sell said, tonight's the night just to get introduced. Timeline is short, we know that. We know there's a funding commitment and that's going to take some some work as well. I think Mr. Sid, the manager also provided us some information, I think, in his update. So I've got, I've got a couple. I don't know if the council wants to start, but if not, I just a couple of items that I was going through on the list and and I saw it when we received. So I appreciate being able to read the the packet over the weekend as well and have an understanding. It was interesting to look at the three different locations and and well, just, I guess I think I'll focus on Elm and and Front. Well, I will say about the 7th Street, I know it was put on the the weakness side as no pedestrian walks in the area. But this is where the Monroe County Loop Trail is going to start westward from the city. But that that's that's still an item to be, they have funding for and it's going to go through. But I think there's other items on there when you talk about the the grade separation currently or the level of it is is a is a complication. So I'll just go to the Elm and Front Street. I'll start with Elm. In looking at it, looking at the two that I see, there's a significant difference in the what would have to be displaced or acquisition when you talk about two versus Front Street having four residents and two commercial. I think the Elm Avenue, I I just want to note there, I think access to Telegraph Road on Elm is different than access to Telegraph on Front. So we have to think about that as well. I think that's an item to take in consideration also because you get down, go down West Elm, you've got to go up one way or the other to get Telegraph. And I think this managed better in the recent years with the restriction on turning. I think that's been beneficial. I think it could even go further with some of the northbound left-hand turns. I don't know that that's necessary if you get people to use the other access point, but that aside. So I think that's just something to put on there as a consideration. On the Front Street, this one, I read it in the report because there's, it's on here as well as far as strength. I think access to M50 is, it's a natural extension, I agree. But I also also know that it's going to bring the complication. We, while we permit local trucks that can still traverse through the city, I think while that's a a strength, that also we'd be prepared for was the access of non-local trucks that would simply want the senior to go straight forward. And that's what we've kind of combated. And I know that the public safety director has received calls even the last couple of weeks. That ebbs and flows, but I think that's a manageable item. It's about signage, but it's also about awareness and then when necessary enforcement. So I think the extension part probably outweighs that. It's just going to be something would have to be monitored by the city side if if the local becomes through truck traffic. And that's that's, then you challenges not only just right at the intersection. It's the challenges, the downtown, the challenges going over to either the Elm or 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 straight through to the Orchard East and then finding their way to the the freeway and stuff. So just just a thought that I had there. And then, of course, that has there about the highest adjacent land impact on the West Front. So those are just my first thoughts when I kind of read through. And just a couple of notes I thought should be added as far as considerations plus or not plus or minus, but just things for awareness and how we'd address them. Significant, there's a lot to these projects here like this, but I think it's council's opportunity to maybe ask questions if they have them. I see Brian, I'll start there and then I'll see who else has questions.
Thank you, Your Honor. Real quickly, just looking at the Mason Run Drain and looking how that's diverted. I have it there for the Elm Avenue construction. Would that be covered, you know, pipe covered up or is that going to be open like it is currently?
That's drawn as an open drain. So basically redirection, open drain with a culvert crossing for the drive access to be corrugated.
So so basically, it would just be open than that?
Be closed, but open drain is how it's was drawn and how it was estimated for that for construction.
What kind of cost do you think would be incurred if we if we closed it? You know, in other words, just covered it up?
An order of magnitude, two to three probably times an open drain. So, you know, whatever, if it's half a million dollars to for an open drain, it might be one and a half million, for example.
If I could ask, Brian, do you do you talk about in entirety or in the section that would be affected by the separation? Okay, that's what I thought you meant, I want to make sure. Okay.
It's it's going to remain open the whole way through. That's, that was a question I had as far as that goes, but.
Except for the drive crossing, of course, at.
There'd be a bridge, more or less.
A culvert and then and then probably two culverts, two, two medium span culverts.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like the idea. I think it's it's a great thing and and there's a lot of thoughts that go into this as far as the traffic being backed up, not necessarily for the railroad being, you know, the crossing there, but for the traffic light that's that's up at Custer Drive there as well. Because the traffic does back up frequently back all the way to Danny's there from the west. And I know that that puts people on the tracks at times and that that can be very dangerous. So I think just for that point alone, it 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 helps the danger situation immensely.
I'll just follow up a comment to that. I think that both the Elm and Front have a, at times, a significant opportunity for traffic. I think your point's well taken on Elm, that there's less space where it get, well, it's about the same to Rossler. But it seems that as you go down Front Street, sometimes it's it's the time of day with St. Michael and the students and the parents picking up it. I've seen it all the way back past that. So but that's, those are things that can be managed, not necessarily about the project itself. I think they're manageable just the considerations. And I was looking at the East Elm here, I I see the the Toll Street still is open, is that correct? Or is that closed, open, right?
That that is shown right there is that's a, it's open.
Yeah, but obviously to the grade that's there.
We would have to, yeah, you'd have to introduce some retaining walls and grade back up to get Toll Street, right?
And Danny's there, which is, you know, has a very good business and visitation, both motorized and non, still has an entrance there as well, as does in the Learning Center. I did like, I want to make a comment and I'll see if there's others here. I did like the inclusion of the 14 feet on the south side of Elm Avenue because that is the extension for the the Riverwalk, the World Trail. And as it comes to there, it would, I I didn't, I know the others doesn't allow that space, but there's not a trail connectivity on Front that's being currently or proposed. It's more pedestrian or a bike. But from a trail aspect with all, you know, mixed use, Elm has, having the 14 feet, I think addresses at least that part. And then as we get in, it get, it narrows as we get in the rest of Elm, at least it's there, so. Other thoughts or comments? I know it's a lot to absorb here, but then we had a chance to hopefully read some.
Let's try that. So the 20% match, I think, is certainly significant. I I think Mr. Sell suggested that if the cash on hand is not available, that we would perhaps pursue bonding for that. Would that need to be approved by, would that go to the voters then? And in that case, logistically, how does that work? If we were to get, are the grant funds distributed and it's like, well, we have to have our bond pass? What happens if the bond doesn't pass? What happens if we don't, if we're not awarded the grant? There's, there's your scenarios.
It it, no, it wouldn't have to go to the voters. It would be a capital improvement bond that the city council would approve, similar to, you know, I think the last one we did was for the fire station. So the city council adopts a bond authorizing resolution. And it is subject to referendum. So there is a 45-day referendum period where the public could bring it to a vote if they wanted to, but usually not likely.
But it doesn't automatically happen.
It doesn't have to automatically go to a vote, no.
I mean, that that still lives, leaves some ifs on the table in terms of the grant award coming through. And then if someone does end up picking it up, because 6 million is not an insignificant number for this community, we're talking about, you know, 30% of the general fund.
Yeah, I mean, it's a big project. There's going to be more than that risk along the line, I'm afraid. But but no, I, it would be rare that it would called, be called for a referendum, but it's a possibility that's out there.
And are we anticipating a high probability of the grant award going through?
Well. I think that's one of the reasons that there's sort of a urge to to get this, an application in this round is because not a lot of communities have projects that they've done feasibility studies on. And we're we're maybe more ready than others are to submit a grant application. So this year, there might not be as much demand as what there might be in future years because there's, like you said, there's $5.5 billion coming out per year. Well, there might be more people interested in future years in those projects than there are this year, so.
That's a fair point.
I guess a follow to that is while we, I think we would qualify with what we what we have in our community and the need and, but and our traffic volumes are are significant for us. But others that may start to put together their their, the plans for it may be more competitive because it could be twice or three times the amount of volume and the impact it has on a broad regional perspective. So the fact that SEMCOG has kind of reached out to administration and it was discussed at the one meeting was at, I thought, okay, you know, and I'm not saying this is the only opportunity we'd have. I'm just saying we maybe have a greater opportunity now because we do have something in hand. But I agree with you, Andrew. It it's it's not that it's an insignificant amount. I think what we start to think about is we've had some rail closings. This would be a significant one that would be closed with the with a separation. But working with the railroad and Mr. Lewis would have that number, I wouldn't. But what kind of on a general basis where we, railroads participated and provided funding for a rail separation, we've had a couple, and how do we get there? And I know you'll have the number.
Statutorily, the railroad would be obligated to make a 5% contribution for the direct, not not of the total project and all that, but directly associated with the bridge. So.
Okay. So so there's a, I guess, a calculation that could be made of looking at that as an item. And then is there other items that, you know, Fundel or or Mr. Lewis would come up and say, well, we've done this before and this is a calculation we'd have to put in. And those are things that we, I think, would be looking for or asking for over the next two weeks to help get us closer to understand, is it possible? Is it feasible? And not just from the benefit of a grade separation, but there's always the financial aspect and the community aspect as well. Brian, I'll see if there's other questions.
One other thing regarding that 5% contribution that they'd have to make, is is that something that's going to, that they're going to weigh in and look and say, you know, it's not worth it, 5%, we're not going to do that? Or the fact that they're actually closing down another crossing, is that helpful to the railroad?
It's helpful. It's helpful with the railroad in in our discussions.
Is it worth 5%?
In our, in our discussions with CSX, they have looked favorably on the project. Conversations we had today with them, they are being inundated by projects all over. I mean, they serve 23 states. So this isn't their their only project. And they put a team together to evaluate which projects are going to give a letter of support. But all of the discussions we've had with them, that anytime they eliminate a crossing, it's a safety improvement and, you know, they'll weigh that that 5%.
Thank you. I mean, you you said about letter support. We think that would be a strength to get that from the railroad's participation and put it as on a list that they would have a favorable consideration for. Michelle, you have a question?
Thank you. The Burgundy Lines at the YMCA and the Riverside Learning Center, are they losing street frontage? Is that what that means?
Those, those, the southerly Burgundy Lines are basically anticipated right of way. That would be needed, procured by the city in order to.
Their drives would have to be moved.
Yes, you would impact some of the parking on that northern edge of the parking lot.
And who, was that up to them to pay for that or how does how does that get paid?
That would be part of the project costs.
Thank you.
In fact, that that location, that little blue area, kind of square, just above that magenta line is a pump station. Anticipated pump station location, yeah.
I did see that on the plans also that both had a inclusion of pump station. I'm sorry, Michelle, if you have heard the.
Well, there's a building over there, yeah.
So I guess I did have a note about that. Just, just for clarification, the the inclusion of a pump station is there for the purpose of obviously pumping, but, you know, what's the impact of the project that is to be there? I mean, it's included, right? It's there. So other than pumping from where and what and for, what's the anticipated capacities?
Of the of the pump station itself?
Being included, yeah. I'm not, I'm not asking the question correct, but.
I'm not sure.
So the pump station is being included in what is the intent, purpose other than pumping?
Other than a drainage evaluation, we haven't done the hydraulics or anything on it yet. So whether it would be needed at the 50, 100, 500,000, we don't, you know, 10, we don't know at this, at this point.
Right, the actual sizing of the pump, no. The anticipated costs. This is based on experiences from other similar projects, which are actually under underway right now in other other areas. But yeah, I mean, just.
Just a grade separation going down, likelihood of of water.
It's a hole that's going to fill with water.
That's what I want, that's, and maybe I should have asked right from the beginning from Mr. Lewis or even yourselves. You know, for those, obviously, those that are here, the few probably have an understanding. But for those that will be watching this, in a short definition, grade separation, if you define it, it might help some people to say, I don't understand what that is. I know you got a rail and you got road, cars going over, so define it for everybody.
It's a highly technical engineering term for a bridge with either the railroad going over the road or the road going over the railroad. You know, it, we call them at-grade crossings when they they cross like they do today. And somebody came up with the term separation because you're separating the railroad and the road. But it's a bridge over for the road or over for the railroad.
Fair enough. I think if we say it, then people listen and say, okay, now I understand what they're talking about. Maybe they can see the pictures. So I think about that because we have a a pump on West Elm currently that goes, that where the road goes under Telegraph. That would be an example. That's something that's already functioning here within our community and what people would have an expectation of.
Right, and that's, that's basically, I was going to point that out, that just on the road, about a quarter mile, there's a pump station that services the area Telegraph Road because, or excuse me, Elm Street because it passes under. And actually, it's at or below the level of the water in some cases if you're driving by in the river. And most of you probably live here, see that. And it's when the levels come too high and it, the water spills into the low, those low areas, essentially a bowl like Tim had mentioned. We got to have a way to get it out of there and those pumps are, become crucial at that point in time.
Which also protects the surrounding areas around where the separation begins and ends.
Correct.
Okay. Oh, Brian, okay, now go down.
All right, thanks, Your Honor. That pumping station that that would be put in there, would that pump out into the remainder of the Mason Run, I'm assuming?
I I pictorially tried to show the the two magenta lines heading to the south along the words Mason Run Drain, several pipe that would run from that pump station, forced main into the river.
So that part of the drain would not, it would still remain a drain, even though it's being?
It would, it it could, it could. It probably would be a slight indentation for railroad drainage, you know, under, under lesser flow. But essentially, no, the the drain would be rerouted ultimately because we can't construct the underpass.
Right, no, what I'm saying for the pump station, though, you you need that drain there for the pump station or?
No, 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 no. No, the pipes would be buried, so it would, it would route all the way out to the river.
Directly to the river, okay. So that, basically, that that area there would be additional property potentially?
Potentially, I was thinking about that as well. You could potentially re, you know, turn it into something other use, some reuse, you will. But I mean, that's just one scenario. There's a platitude of, you know, that one made the most sense as we were walking through it. You know, just forced main it right out to the to the river, pump it away from the site.
Agreed.
Andrew? I actually had one of the same questions. And you can't just pump it back into the drain because, oh, yeah, what filled up the hole in the first place probably is? Given the choice regarding drainage, since we're on the issue, between this and Front, I'd certainly prefer this because in the several times a year that Elm is closed at Telegraph, I would anticipate that the bottom of the Elm Underpass at Telegraph and the bottom of the Elm Underpass at the tracks here. of the Elm underpass at the tracks here probably are going to be about the same, somewhat similar? Or is this one going to be lower?
Ish.
Lower-ish?
I would say this is probably.
This might be a little higher.
I was going to say slightly higher.
In the, in the cases where it's going to be closed, sometimes it's closed up as far as the YMCA anyway. You can't get through there regardless. So if one's going to flood, the other's going to flood, you might as well close down the whole route. But if you do the same thing over at front, well, now you've just closed off the alternate route and now we really are in a pickle. Because I, I think I'm the only council person who lives west of those, of those railroad tracks. So I go through those every, I went, I crossed those to get to the meeting here today. So. But as I think about the issues that the railroads cause for, cause for the city in terms of traffic and in terms of other things, and certainly it's a, it's a partnership, right? But I don't, I don't, I don't think of the west side of town. I certainly think of the east side of town. And I must begin this with an apology because I was, I, I came late to the meeting. So you probably already covered this. But I'd be more, much more interested in, in what we're doing in this green circle over to the east. Because Kentucky to me seems to be, now Kentucky is not a intersection because the railroad runs parallel to the road. But to me, that's the biggest issue in town regarding the railroads.
Somewhere around 25 years ago, we entered into what was called the Monroe Rail Consolidation Project. Tim, Tim actually spent a lot of time. Manikin Smith and others designed and had the Dixie Highway grade separation constructed. That was basically the first step in the rail consolidation program that was going to occur shortly thereafter. I believe it was a, kind of a sparring match between the railroads.
Yeah. When the, you, you, two railroads would have to agree to co-mingle on it. And they don't always play well in the sandbox. They, you know, it's, it's okay as long as I have control. But if you have control, then that doesn't work for me. So there's a, there's a lot of that going on. But the one thing I would say is, and we did, we did mention this in the beginning, that doing anything on the west side does not preclude anything happening on the east side. And it actually, you know, facilitates the flow of traffic to, so you know what it's going to be when you get over to work on Kentucky or along, along the east side.
And the consolidation program was to take that westerly most track within that green oval and move it into that corridor. Thereby, you're severing all those neighborhoods through there. Now, that would completely go away. This project on the west side actually complements that. Because now you're, you have, if the, if the rail consolidation were to occur, you already got the, the bridge at Dixie. Now you've got a throughway from M50 all the way through the city on whichever route. It works at Elm, it works at front. And that's where those green and, or those orange and blue lines we're trying to show is routing through the city. This also has a much larger regional impact. Again, the connectivity of neighborhoods, that helps that MDOT's plans to close down Elm Street.
Is that correct?
Elm Street, I think they're going to close Elm Street. And then redirect, revise the interchange at Front Street, First Street, you will. So that all plays into that, that green oval. It's a much larger regional impact and project.
I, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with you that the engineering and the policy are not precluded by the mutual action, but certainly the finances might be. And the, the dollars are limited. And if you take on a big project over here, well, that means there's one less big project over there that you can do, whether it be this or something else. Is there an advantage right now? Because we're also talking about, I mean, I, I see it's marked here. And right now, the assumption is that, that the exit north of the River Elm is going to be closed when the 75 gets redone. Is there an advantage in having, because you're talking about a straight east-west corridor through town, that's a straight shot that you don't have any railroad crossings over. But you have, Elm is not going to have its own exit on the highway. So if you're making a gateway through town, is there, i- is there more benefit to having it be south of the river?
It's hard to say.
And I say this as a detriment to me because I live north of the river. I'd prefer it there. All things the same. But all things are not the same. I think that it's the Elm that's going to go.
A little bit to our traffic engineer. Maybe she has some thoughts on that.
Yeah, I guess, I, I think, I think your concept, I see what you're saying because it would, that there, it wouldn't go straight from I-75, but it does via Dixie. And actually having Elm with the already where the underpasses, what they said would be more aligned. It's just not straight.
That would be my thought. But, you know, that's the point of discussion.
Yeah, exactly. And I, so I, and I agree that, you know, when we started talking about rail consolidation, when we look at the Orchard East and we look at the rails there, we've done some of those rail closures for, because we had, I think, six or something at one time or maybe more. And, you know, where the, we, you know, started stubbing the streets and not having crossing. I think that's, that's managed. But we, we also have to think, what's the, what's in the long-term, a great separation along those tracks? There's double tracks. And of course, then there's still Kentucky. If Kentucky doesn't go, you're still going to have the same item if you don't get under all of them. And that's quite of a length of top space. And I think it's going to take a rail consolidation, not to do a project, but just to may have the greatest benefit. You could, the, the two tracks that are further east, if there was a separation there, you still have the Kentucky rail, which is problematic at times. So, so I'm not disputing it's, I, I, we, we all know because we see the, the opportunity that, or the disruption that causes when they're on any of the through streets there, whether it be First, Third, or whatever.
Your honor, I apologize. But I, I know I was involved heavily when we first started scoping this. We sat down with the Manikin Smith team. And that's, Councilman, that's a very valid point. Since I've started with the city, my goal was before I retired to do something with that east side track. It is a very Herculean effort. And I think the main reason we chose to focus at this time on the west side underpasses was it was attainable in this grant cycle. And, and the, the issues about the funding, absolutely, we agree with you. But the first phase of the rail consolidation was the underpass at Dixie. That took three different congressional appropriations and three different highway bills in cooperation with the two railroads. And that was, that was about a 15-year hurdle just to build an underpass. The track work we started on in 2005, and that was, that was clearly going to be several orders of magnitude more expensive than this. You're probably looking at $100 million to do something, which is why, as we discussed, we've had a region-wide, that needs to be a regional effort. Not disagreeing at all. But the, as I think the points have been made a couple of times here tonight, that we don't want to act in haste, but we are a community that has this advantage because we've been looking at this for 20 to 25 years. We have a strong grant application. I've talked to a few people at the state that have acted like they're really excited that we're interested in throwing in on this first pot of federal money. And I think that's where we've chosen to focus on what we think is an attainable goal that's tangible, that can benefit our residents right now. The east side is, as we mentioned, region-wide because the track work necessary to fix the problem, which is you have a track running along Kentucky, is going to take you a mile or two into the surrounding townships. So we need other partners. We need other players. We need the road commission. We need the county. We need those townships. We need both railroads. Will be a year or two before we will even know what specifically we want to do on that side. So it's sort of a situation of, don't let the good be the enemy of the perfect. In a perfect world, we'd have a ready-to-go project on the east side, but we don't. And I think that's why the administration is admittedly pushing a fairly large decision in front of you in a two-week period here because we, we do feel we'll have a much, much stronger case this time than when everybody has a chance to mobilize all the downriver communities that have double the traffic counts, more industrial tax base that they can throw at this. I think now is our chance. So that's, I think, why we're pushing hard and admittedly forcing a decision on you that, it's, it's going to be a difficult one to make. But I just wanted to add those couple of things in there that that's why at the, three months ago, when we kickstarted this, we said, we've got to focus on one or the other. That's why we picked the west side. So we're still going to keep fighting for the east side. But for right now, we want to get going. So I didn't mean to jump in there, but I thought that was.
I think it brings back around, you know, looking at the time as well. So it was introduced today for us to understand that we've, we've asked to have this, a study presented to us about a rail, a grade separation. The information's here is what's come back. We understand some of what the, what the cost could be, some of the funding that's possible, what the match is. And really, it's time to really kind of, if there's other questions, more than I want to take them. I'm not saying we're not going to have the questions. We can still get to our other item even in a presentation at council if we needed to. But.
Mr. Mayor?
I want to make sure all the questions are answered. Yes, sir.
Could I just mention one thing? Eric just reminded me too, that there are grant dollars available for, for review and investigation of other projects such as the east side rail consolidation program. So.
Kind of like a planning grant is what you're saying?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. And I, I think that there's going to be more of those coming forward as well because the, we know the volume of revenues that are coming federally for this. And, and while we, if we, if the council decides to move forward here or not, there's still the opportunity to, to make sure we have that study prepared as well. Eric?
Yeah. And just to, to summarize that, we, we did discuss that initially when we met with the administration, realizing what the timing was. And as Mr. Lewis outlined, looking at a little bit longer term on the east side and, and starting to build that regional support that we would need outside of the city, as well as looking at what those funding opportunities would be. So there are, there are, you, you have a very good chance of receiving a planning grant for something of that magnitude that covers that cost separate from looking at this grade separation. So they, while they're very similar as far as impacts, they're very different in the eyes of the federal government.
Andrew?
If you let me.
Yeah, we'll take a few more.
I'll try and talk quickly.
I want to make sure that all the council members also, if they have questions, they get in, but go ahead.
I will yield if there are other questions.
No, go ahead. Come back.
Okay. Speaking of the nine or 10-figure infrastructure projects that are happening in this area, this project is happening fairly proximal to the proposed passenger rail tee between Ann Arbor, Toledo, Detroit. I'm sure you're familiar with all that. Is, you, you had mentioned, your team had mentioned that the, the grade on the railroad itself could not be adjusted that much. Is that project the result of why?
No. No, the grade, it, it has to do more with the freight operations on there, the, just the, the length of trains and being able to haul tonnage uphill.
Fair enough. Okay. Support of the project, apprehensive of the price tag?
I'm sorry.
I said, I'm supportive of the project, but I'm apprehensive of the price tag. I hope that's fair to say.
Yeah, I think that we all recognize that, you know, the, with the amount and what needs to have for the match. And I think that's over the next couple of weeks that we continue to look at administration or who, and Mr. Sell and say, okay, what, what is feasible? How is it possible? How do we gain support also from the residents? Because, you know, we're, we, we have many needs here on, on different projects that we're currently going and proposing here in the future as well. So how does this fit? And I, I guess the timeframe, it might help me also. What's the timeframe of, if the application is submitted, what, just, and you may not have the exact answer, but when do you anticipate to hear responses from the state and federal, the commitment? And then the, and then of obviously getting started and getting finished? Is there a thought on that?
Well, as we all are aware, the federal government sets deadlines that local municipalities and states have to, have to meet. They don't necessarily impose deadlines on them, on themselves. So I would anticipate that the, if the application goes in on October 4th, it might not be this calendar year that they, they make an announcement or an award. I, I can't see that they can get through the filtration process to evaluate all of these to make an announcement before an election. Okay? So it would probably push off till first quarter of next year. And historically, it has taken almost once, so you get notified that your project has been selected. Good. Then you have to negotiate the, the grant, then you have to have the full funding grant agreement in place with the federal, with the federal railroad administration. We have seen that take a year. It can be done quicker depending on, you know, how things go. But, you know, to a year before the money's in place. Now, with that said, this program does have the eligibility to allow for costs to be recouped back to last November. So if you, you felt comfortable, you could move forward with the design and, and preliminary engineering and environmental and all of that before you had the full funding grant agreement. But that would be up to the administration and your, your legal advice. So.
Kelly, go ahead.
Just from my understanding, I know on the east side, we're talking about rail consolidation. On the west side, we're talking about rail gradation. Is, well, if we do the project for the rail consolidation, does that reduce the need for the rail grading?
At, at this location? Work on the west side, if you can, if you combined the railroads down onto one right-of-way on the east side, it really doesn't, in, in, as near as I can tell, it doesn't change any dynamics as far as the need for a bridge over or under the railroad on the west side.
And I think you're asking if you do a.
If we do it on the east side, does it take away the need?
East side.
It doesn't reduce the need for the grade separation?
No.
On the east side?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Actually, I think it's the, kind of the first step to make it more feasible because then you have one less rail that you have to have a grade separation on.
Yeah. As probably as part, I'm knowing from other projects that have done, one of the things when you do the consolidation, you would also take a look to see if there were places where you could take and put a grade separation that would reduce the need for some of the other grade crossings. Because you're going to lose roughly half the grade crossings because you got, say, 12 on one railroad and 12 on the other. If they're all on one, those 12 combined, instead of 24, you've got 12. And then if you can look at a place where you would build a bridge, and, you know, could that possibly render some of the other crossings unnecessary and you can maybe have less than 12?
So for example, if we were to choose, let's say Elm Street as a crossing location, or we could show that we don't need, not to say this is the case, but that we don't need Seventh and we can close Seventh Street altogether, that would look, that would be very favorable.
That would get, that would increase, that would look, the feds would look, the feds would be more favorable if you want to build a bridge and you're eliminating one grade crossing is okay. But if you're eliminating a half a dozen grade crossings and building one bridge, then they look more favorably upon that. Yeah.
Didn't come out very well to begin with.
I think, I think your point, I think Kelly understands it. I think it's the, we've, we've done some closings and we've, we've seen the benefit from that. And there's also capacity of how much can go through the, the grade separation route. But yet if you could, you know, more people gravitate toward that because they know they can free the flow. And then it might be able to say, well, this, and we look at the Orchard East, there's many more crossings that are near each other that are probably people pick it because it's how, maybe the street they live on. Or maybe it's because they like the traffic better. But they're going to like a grade separation because they won't have to go there all the time. So how do, they, they could go there all the time without having that concern or worry. So your points will take. And I understand what you were asking. Are there other final questions? I do, because I think we still have time to hear the second one. I know there's a lot to think, there's a lot to think about for the council. And as was clearly pointed out, the administration wants us to have these questions tonight, but also think about it. Please get back with Mr. Pastu, if you have. And, and I know that the administration will be working further to bring any additional information that comes forward for our, our next meeting because that's really the, the timeline. It's rather quick, significant project, but we also know the significant benefit too. So if there's no other questions, thank you all very much. It was a great presentation. Thanks for the information. And I know we'll be in contact here. Mr. Sell?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think just to close that, I, I think the direction that the administration is heading is to plan to have a grant application on the next agenda for your. for your approval. So if, if for some reason you didn't think that's the way you wanted to go, you should let, let us know quick. I guess the next item on the agenda is a presentation by our Public Safety Director, Chad Tolsted. He, there was a camera project budgeted for in the capital improvement program budget for this year. And Chad has been taking the lead on, on planning for it, and he's got a presentation to do for you.
Thanks, Chad. Before you begin, I'm sorry, Director, before you begin, we think about the, the, we know what the, we, we need to be prepared. We need to think that we're going to submit an application, but we also have to figure out the other parts, whether it be financially, community impact, just, not just the benefits. So I, I think, you know, the application can be started and be ready to go, but we also know that there's going to be some final conversation at our next meeting that is where we'll make a decision on it. But we need to be prepared because we can't make a decision and say by tomorrow morning at about 5:00 the next day, I know you'll get that application done. So I don't think it's a, a waste of work if we do it, because we know there's going to be opportunities in the future as well. If we know how to go through that process and have an application ready, I think with, if we get there at the next meeting, when it comes time to really cast votes, then we'll know. And if not, we know that we're, we're further ahead in the future for, that's what it, and what it takes. So I'm comfortable with that. Director Tolsted?
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, Clerk Lavoy, if you want to approve a project that's less than $7 million, you're going to like what I have to say here tonight. So I was, talked with Mr. Pastu, City Manager, regarding the camera projects for the downtown area and really for the city of Monroe. The Public Safety took this project on, not so much as because it primarily concerns public safety, it's just to take the lead with the project. But going back, why did we even start looking to install cameras within the city of Monroe? So we're going to walk through just some quick advantages and disadvantages. You have those there in front of you. And some of the advantages is support to citywide security plans. As I know, City Managers discussed with some of you, next year, we'll be looking to look at our critical infrastructure with the inflammation of a fire marshal and do some of those studies. This will support that plan as well. It helps to deter crime. There is many a studies that have been done that cameras such as these, security cameras placed around, does reduce crime, monitor scenarios, activities such as social events, demonstrations, gather data to improve city functions. So we'll be able to review camera footage and things like that to look back over city functions that we've held and how do we improve those functions and to arrive at right decisions. Again, by monitoring events and having a record of those events. So if there was something involving with the city, city vehicles or something like that, we have a record of those events within that capacity. And it's also a cost-saving measure, so less personnel potentially. Some disadvantages, some things that it was concerned with is the privacy issue. One thing they want to note, these cameras that we are looking at do not include facial recognition nor plate recognition software in them. And it does not prevent theft or crime. While it will reduce, I guess, the job security for law enforcement, we will always have theft and we will always have crime that occurs, it just helps to reduce those things. So there's a little background of the pros and cons. And before we get into the camera placements or the recommendations that you have there in front of you, how did we arrive at the decisions and the placement of those cameras? So a couple of years back, when I still worked for Chief McCormick, all the depart, many of the departments within a city were given this project. And here's the scope of the project, saying, hey, we're going to, we want to install cameras. What would, what would benefit you in your department? So everybody went back to their own departments, plotted out different camera areas, and then fast forward two years, we're back on track here. So we started looking, when we went down, sat down and looked, where do we want to install these cameras at? We included all the, we looked at all the different departments. And coincidentally, a lot of the areas that affected different departments were in concert with one another. So through cooperation and then through consultation with information technology. So, okay, we want cameras here and here. We talked with specifically Jake Perry from Information Technology, who was able to say, yes, you can do it here, no, we cannot do it here. So, and then reviewed our final process. So in our final process, before we, for the presentation here tonight, we sat down, we, we go, okay, this is the cameras, gave it to Mr. Pastu and reviewed this project one last time. So that's how we, when I start going through the cameras, that's how we arrived at the placement of all these cameras. So Phase One, so you see Phase One has eight cameras within, most of them within the downtown area. And I'll kind of go through each one of these cameras somewhat quickly. We can go, we go back. If you have questions concerning specific cameras, we can go back through them. So then during the Phase One, mostly concerns in downtown Monroe. The first one would start at Front Washington. It would follow the, the flow of traffic, items related to the downtown, the departments, it would affect DDA, engineering, and of course, public safety. The second camera at the Opportunity Center, this one specifically is outside the downtown area. And this one was more for, because we had reports that during, at Labor Park, there was like bolts being removed from the playscapes and some other damage and some other activity down there. So we wanted to get, you know, one of the areas we wanted to get was protect that investment made by the city at Labor Park, and this would help prevent that. So this would, Parks and Recreation, engineering would also be affected because we'd have a view of Winchester Street. Camera three, Elm and Monroe, this one's also a significant camera because it monitors St. Mary's Park. It monitors the Elm and Custer, I'm sorry, Elm and Monroe Street area, where we often have many people that gather for demonstrations and such. This provides us in a camera in that location so we can have a record of the events and how things transpired there. So Parks and Recs, DDA, engineering, all public safety, it all benefit from the use of this camera. Camera four, moving down crossover to McComb and Front, again, DDA, downtown businesses, engineering. Camera five, this would come in at Front and McComb facing west. I actually, I think I have that in the wrong area. That would be Monroe in Front, again, for downtown businesses there. Camera six, this one's kind of a different camera. This one covers St. Mary's Park. And the significance of St. Mary's Park is that many of you may have heard of beach cameras, where you can log on to different areas within the United States and go, hey, I want to go to beach camera. My wife loves going to the beach camera. It's a dream. I'm going on vacation. So you might be able to utilize this one in the same capacity where we can turn on the camera and those citizens in Monroe or outside Monroe will say, hey, what, what about that great event? Like, we had many different events at the St. Mary's Park throughout the summertime. They can then log on possibly with the possibility of viewing a live event. Camera seven would be first in Washington, La Ranger Square. This would be beneficial for some of our events, such as the Christmas, the tree lighting ceremony, which is planned in December. And lastly, camera eight, which covers Monroe Street. It would also have a view of the river as well. As we know, we had the big ice jam of last year. This would help out different departments as well. So all these, most of the downtown, like I said, seven of the eight cameras are there. And going back a couple of weeks, when Mark Cochran was talking about the social district, if you looked where we had placed the cameras, all are, seven of the eight are placed within that social district area, which is beneficial as with the city explores the idea of venturing out into the social district area, which is, which is basically carrying open alcohol tanners within the area of the city. This would help us with some of the review of how this is going for the social district. So it laid out some, also some Phase Two, what Phase Two would look like. I had my commander, Commander Lindsay, kind of plot some cameras out. You look at nine and 12 camera on there, they close out kind of that downtown area. And then we kind of continued on. You see their place throughout the city, mostly the, we monitor traffic in a high-traffic area, both foot and vehicle traffic. So kind of moving ahead here for the camera info, information. So the retention period for these cameras is internal storage. It's 256 gigabytes, which means if you turn this camera on and just let it record, it would record for about 20 straight days before it would start overriding itself, which is a lot of cam, which is a lot of camera in there. So the camera itself is a 40 megapixel, 1080p. It has a wide-angle lens on it. It has audio recording, so it does record audio, which depending on how loud the noise is and how close it is approximately to the cameras, what you're going to pick up on. Cameras also have a record of analytics, which means if you have affiliate with the Ring Doorbell, you can set your Ring Doorbell to, I don't want to pick up the bird flying by. So you can set these cameras, not only to record, but you can set them for motion activity, which means we can set them for, hey, I want to see, I want to pick up a car going by, I want to pick up a person walking by. You can set these, which extends out that retention period as well. Access control is of course controlled by information technology. So the pricing, hardware, software for all these cameras, $11,016. The enterprise license for this, a 10-year license, combining those two together, you 22,676, $56. Installation using our own in-house installation, Dave Tubbs, our electrician, he figures about three to four hours per camera when we kind of laid out what our plan would be. I went on the high side, so it would be about $1,120 to install those. And then we looked at hotspots for these cameras as opposed to partnering with downtown businesses. And the reason why we looked at hotspots as opposed to partner at this time is when businesses change or someone just decides, hey, I want better Wi-Fi in my business, they change their Wi-Fi, they don't notify us, and we might not know, know about this until it's too late, we want some video camera footage. So at this, this early, especially the early onslaught of this Phase One, we thought looking for individual hotspots was the best way to go. So, but that does come with a price as well, about $288 a month, $3,456 annual cost. So the startup cost for the first year for the camera project is $27,252.56, which does include the first year of the hotspots. And then every year thereafter, these eight cameras would be 3,406, I'm sorry, the annual cost, 3,456 annual cost to maintain those hotspots. So if approved, and we want to move forward with this, backing up just a little bit, so the, the, I think the, the information you had in front of you was we had 50,000, it's actually, we had $60,000 set aside for this project. The reason why there was $60,000 at the beginning was because we were talking about a building a massive infrastructure where basically you can build almost your own Wi-Fi downtown and it shoots like a laser beam from one camera to the next. Talking with IT and some of the placement, we wanted the camera, that wasn't possible at this time. But as we grow the program, if that's what City Council chooses to do, grow the program, that is possible. So that's a higher upfront cost. And then later, but this, higher upfront cost, but later you get your savings because you're not having to pay for the individual hotspots. So if approved, going forward, so we, I, my think on this was to start conservative, start with, let's see how this project, how this project works, establish the baseline, set the parameters for the cameras, and see if we like them or not and how it's going. Review Phase Two cameras and with the placement of those cameras, and then fall through with the recommendation of implement, implementation, implementation of Phase Two. Now available for questions?
Well, I'll start, see if there's other questions. So I appreciate the presentation plus the information ahead of time, be able to read it and see the locations and appreciate the update on some of the narrative that was helpful as well. But looking at the fact sheet, you're looking to bring this back at the October 3rd, the next City Council meeting?
That's correct, yes.
City Council meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That was the only thing, just so we had reviewed that to know what's coming back soon. Kelly, question?
Yes, I had a couple of questions. Is this like the traffic cameras in Toledo where they mail the ticket to your house?
No, ma'am. No, this is, this is, this is just, really just security for the city and the monitor for events for the city. It doesn't record license plates, it's not facial recognition, it's nothing like what the city of Toledo has in terms of issuing traffic tickets without it being stopped by an officer.
Okay. I was curious. And then I'm glad that it doesn't have the facial recognition because I don't know if you're aware of the fact that facial recognition, the darker the skin tone, the harder.
Yes, ma'am.
The time with it. So until they can get the pixels right and everything, I really wouldn't like the facial recognition because it, especially darker-skinned people, it has a hard time properly recognizing them. So.
Yes, ma'am. I was aware of that, but we weren't initially pursuing that avenue. But I was aware that facial recognition is not reliable for the different, for a darker-skinned tone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Great question on the, you know, regarding this. And, you know, it's not for those, those purposes. I think the, besides facial recognition, it's not going to be for mailing tickets and those things of using cameras for enforcement. It's really protection and opportunities that do present information. And I always say, you know, we, we have, we have residents and people that help officers in investigation. It might be, well, is this color of car? It was this type of a vehicle? And I think I got this much of the plate to see, you know, we get those, we get them from people as well. So the opportunity to capture something, but not the identification to go, as you said. So other question, Brian?
Yeah, I see that there's a license agreement for 10 years. Just wanted to verify that that's just basically to utilize these cameras? The license agreement is for that purpose? Or what was the, I'm trying to figure out what the reasoning for the license agreement was.
I believe it's the software. It's, you know, the license to utilize the software for 10 years. And I did check with information. So if we added more cameras, these costs do go up. So that's not a 10, that's not 10 years for the whole city. That, that's, there's a prorated amount. I don't know what that would be, but that does, that does escalate.
Pretty typical with Meraki is who these cameras are from. All of our wireless hotspots in City Hall are from Meraki, and we have license agreements on all of those as well for, I can't remember how long, but quite a period of time.
And I'll add to, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, that these are my deal pricing. These, these are government pricing cameras as well.
Michelle?
If someone were to take one of these cameras out on the street and knock it out, how much does it cost to repair it or replace it?
So the camera themselves, go back, I have about approximately $3,400. If you take the, the camera itself, do I have a breakdown of just the camera? I don't know if I have a price of tag of just the camera itself. So probably about a, looking, doing some quick math here, about 1,000, it looks like, per camera is kind of, is what it looks like going off the pricing summary on that. You're welcome.
Questions? Andrew?
So Phase One is this year.
Phase Two, everything looking good, will be next year supposedly. So you're talking 27,000 this year, 30,000 next year, and then it's like a $9,000 just ongoing cost to maintain that infrastructure.
Approximately, yes. I mean, there's, the camera project itself, when we first put it out to the different departments, it was spread out even more so than what we have laid out here for the Phase Two. Depending on how far the council would like to go to monitor different areas of the city, there was asked about, I think from Parks and Rec, to put additional cameras out at Munson Park with, you know, they've had issues with cars turfing the fields and things like that to go even further back out there. That would create some logistics for some of those projects.
So the strategy, is it, is it to cover the, the hotspots, and I don't mean anything to do with Wi-Fi there?
Yes.
And, or to supplement where your officers can't be all the time?
So.
Because Munson's sort of, sort of in the corner of the city, you can't have somewhere out there, someone out there all the time.
Right. It, it's kind of both, you know? So we can't have someone out there. So that's not a high-frequency crime area, so we don't have a lot of activity, but enough out there where it causes some concern, where people want to go out with their families and not see, see that type of activity or see the damage, something done. So that does help the law enforcement with being able to review that type of video, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Director.
Any other questions? Very well. Thank you, Chad.
You're welcome.
Look forward to seeing this back in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, thank you, Council.
So, Mr. Sell, I know we have a couple, I know we're running toward the end here, a couple of items on the agenda that we need to, either Mr. Budgy or yourself, that we just want to raise. I'll start with one that I noticed. We have an, one of the items on the agenda is the appointments, which is 3698. While it's correct here in the fact sheet, it's a tree advisory commission. However, I was looking at the resolution, it says tree advisory committee. So I think we need to pull that item to, to make the amendment to the resolution to say commission, not committee. So if, during the course of our consent agenda, if it can be pulled, and then we'll pick it back up under the council action, correct?
So that's not something we want to do during amending of the agenda. We want to pull it when we bring up the consent.
Thank you. Getting me back on track. We're not amending the agenda. When it comes time for the consent agenda, we need to have item 3698 pulled just to make the correction on the resolution.
Right. And it'll go to the, under council action, and we'll go ahead and make that change then.
Thank you, Clerk. Mr. Budgy, you had a couple. So if you could review those and then, because you think a couple of items need to be council's attention and discussion as well.
I do, Your Honor. Thank you. I would ask that when we get to the consent agenda, that item 3709 be pulled for discussion of the property at 1304 East First. I anticipate there may be a member of the public that indicated an intention to attend today to speak to that matter. speak to that matter. And I would also ask that we pull item 3705, which is the authorization for legal action, as I do have good news to report, that I think at least one and perhaps two of those properties can come off that list for today based on recent developments.
For the council, if we can get those pulled during the consent agenda discussion, we'll get them placed on our council action, and then we can hear more about those at there. Last thing on the applications for the appointment to the tree commission. I noticed going through, I did not see the, if you received copies of the applications, at least you as a council member should know who was putting in and have their background. So, I, I placed those here this evening, just a note, you know, there's, there's notes on there that I write as I go through, but you'll see the appointments are staggered because we need to stagger them now. So, they're, as they come up for renewal, we're not trying to renew the entire commission. Has no bearing on which is which, because one's gonna come up quickly anyways, the first of the next year in June. So, so that's what I have. I know we have about four minutes. If there's not anything pressing from the council, we can move forward and, and there in the meeting, unless there's an item that you have a question for Mr. Sell regarding item on the agenda, if you wish to do it now or after. Can always do it during the meeting, right? I see somebody thinking, so, nope, okay. Mr. Sell, do you have anything further then?
No, Your Honor. I, I think we're all set.
Okay, at this time, we'll close the work session. We have about three minutes now. Come back for the meeting, and I'll be right back.